Thank you, Ms. Jakes. We are now ready for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President. I move the Board to approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? We're ready to vote. I see Dr. Anderson at the podium, so we will go to school highlights.
This is one of our favorite times of the Board meeting, the first part in which we highlight a number of people, we have students and staff. So we're going to start off with our student, our Senior of the Month. And let me make sure, our Topeka High Principal, we have all of our Principals here this evening, but Ms. Morrissey, come forward. And we're going to start a video, so you learn a little bit about our Senior of the Month.
My name is Madison Jakes. I'm a senior at Topeka High School.
The Topeka High School staff would tell you that she is one of the most remarkable young ladies that they've seen.
I had the pleasure of mentoring Madison Jakes through class and also starting and running a coffee shop here at Topeka.
Starting up the coffee shop has opened up to lots of opportunities. I've been on the cover of CJ Online, I've been on two local news stations, I did a promotional video for YE where they took their film crew down from New York. And it's just been a great opportunity to get to do a lot of things like this, where I get to do public speak and do interviews. It's been a lot of fun and I've learned a lot from it that I wouldn't trade for anything.
A lot of us, you can find it in halls of Troy. Madison certainly has found getting here, she's found the things she's good at and it's helped her frame what she wants to do after. And when we talk about our Troy, the standards that we went by, she exemplifies every one of those Trojan masks, she is one of the best and brightest and represents other students who are also extremely talented.
When I graduated From Topeka High School, my dream school is MIT. I'll probably end up at either Colorado University in Boulder or at Wichita State. And I want to major in aerospace engineering as well as getting my MBA. Learning in high school that I can be myself has been really important and it's been really important when I'm focusing on where I want to go and what I want to do.
I think she's going to be able to accelerate a journey wherever she goes because she's bright, she understands the hard work of things, and she also understands how to get things done through other people. Go get them, Madison, go get them.
Dr. Morrison and members of the Board, as well as Dr. Anderson, who's currently covering me, so I'll just wrap myself out. One of the things we always do is we have a gift for our... See, my mom's here, she'll appreciate this because we are not good with birthdays and presents are always six months late, and this is the first time I've forgotten, so sorry about that. The good news is, she hasn't known for sure where she's going yet, so we will make sure we provide you with an appropriate present when you make that decision. It's always fun to stand here and it is so fun to present students who excel in so many ways. I'm a little surprised I didn't hear her nickname. I have a hard time remembering its massive Jakes because all I knew her ass the first time Warren Moore told me about her, that she was coming to see me, is Mad Jack. So people will say something, and I'm like, Mad Jack, Mad Jack, what is the real name? It took me a while to get it. This young lady came in my office as a sophomore. We had tried four or two with seniors who wanted to get the coffee shop started, and they would get going, of course, then they'd graduate, they couldn't quite get it to fruition. So when he brings me a sophomore, I thought, oh my, you have to be kidding, but it gives them time to do it. She enters my office, she is the most eloquent, articulate, she's succinct, I appreciate that at 90 miles an hour, but she's caring, she has a smile, she was super intelligent. I think Dad's background might have a little to do with that. After meeting Mom, the soft demeanor and the patience and the care comes through and the quick mind comes from sitting right there, and I'm going to let her introduce her parents. She not only got this thing running, it's student-run. She had to do business plans, she had to talk to plumbers at the school and get people in to finish and get this space completed. She presented the community, we had an idea for how to get money, and she ended up not needing the money that I would have given her. She has made a profit, they work together to provide scholarships to the students who work in there, they don't get paid, so she's got her own peers in there working and the true test of her leadership. She's brilliant, she is involved, she is a cheerleader, a head cheerleader, which when you meet her with the intelligence, it would surprise you. She's a debater, I mean, you could go on about all the things she does, so ask lots of questions. But what I am most impressed by is she is on the verge of being able to ensure that what she is leaving behind, the legacy she leaves behind will outlast her leadership. That's a true leader. She can leave and the coffee shop runs because of what she's done. So I have to tell you, she is one of the top handful of students in my 37 years in this business, she wouldn't know that, but I love every minute I've got to spend with her. Thank you for sharing her with Topeka High School, thank you for being a treasure, thank you, Dr. Anderson, for the gift, and wearing the right color this evening, because I didn't do that either. At this time, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you, and you, Mr. Moore, our Student of the Month for Topeka Public Schools and Topeka High School, Madison Jakes. I have some questions, I'll turn it over to them to ask questions, and then we do have a little something for you.
All right, sounds good. Hi, everyone, I'm Madison Jakes, and that's my dad, Brian Jakes, and my mom, Amy Jakes.
Very good. Questions? Dr. McCarthy.
Welcome tonight, it's our pleasure to be able to honor you. It's so nice for the Board to get to actually see our students and hear directly from them, so I would be interested in hearing anything you'd like to tell us about your experience throughout being in Topeka Public Schools, whether there was a school before Topeka High or if you just want to talk about any favorite teachers or classes or experiences.
Okay, so I guess I'll start with middle school. I went to Jardine Middle School. It was definitely a shock for me because I went to St. Gerhard Elementary School. And so it was kind of my first time stepping out into less of a shelter world and more of the real world. And I think that Jardine did a really good job at like that jump in and offered me a lot of good opportunities. And Ms. Pearson, my gifted English teacher from sixth and seventh grade, is probably the teacher that I think will have an impact on me for my entire life, even though I only had her for two years, just because she is probably the smartest person I've ever met. But going to Topeka High has been really fun because it's very diverse and so I haven't had to fit into a stereotype. I started doing competitive cheer when I was about nine, but I've always loved math and science, so even on my competitive cheer team, whenever anyone needed help with homework, they're like, oh, ask MJ, she's the nerd. And it's like, it's just, I've always had that stigma around me, and at Topeka High, I've been able to do everything. I do debate forensics, I do cheer, and last year I took STEM AP classes, and this year I'm taking free. And it's been a lot of fun and had a lot of great teachers along the way. I think one of my favorite things, especially I think that's pushing me towards what I want to do, is I have only had one male math and science teacher since eighth grade, and so I've had a lot of incredible female role models. And whenever anyone asks me, what pushed me to go to STEM, how can we get more women in STEM, my answer is always that I, like, men telling me, you got this, we need more women, it's great, but when you can find that female role model, it really pushes you a lot further. And so that's been a great opportunity for me to have, like, I've had Ms. Womack for three years, and I had Ms. Patterson for two, and I think that those two women meant a lot to me, considering what I want to do.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Madison, congratulations and thank you for coming to speak to us. I guess I can see exactly what Ms. Morrissey was talking about, incredibly articulate, there is a warmth that you exude, which can sometimes be hard for incredibly intelligent people, so keep those two things. Present company excepted, of course, everybody is incredibly intelligent. Quick question for you, though, you mentioned MIT, you were looking to want to get an MBA as well. Remind me again exactly what profession, what discipline that you wanted to study, and how did you choose that? Did you say, was it engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
So when I was seven, I told my dad that I wanted to work for NASA, and he goes, so you want to be an astronaut? And I said, no, I want to build the rockets. And ever since then, I've always wanted to do aerospace engineering. There's a moment when I was like, maybe I'll do architectural, maybe I'll do this, maybe I'll do that, but I always come back to the same spot. And so I've always wanted to do aerospace engineering, but through like YE and this year for the coffee shop, I've learned how important I think business education is. And like, my philosophy is that if the more I know about business, the more successful I'll be able to be because it's the foundation of everything. And so I think that having those two degrees together will allow me to do really anything that I want. And so when I graduate, I want to work in an engineering firm, working on innovation, and hopefully work my way into some of the more administration-type jobs within that field. And then once I have reached my end of engineering, I would like to work at the Division of Aviation for either the state or the federal government, work on regulation, because I think that innovation is something that's happening so fast right now that we need more regulation. And so I think that's where I want to go and that's what I want to do.
What a thoughtful young lady. So as somebody who works in regulatory affairs, I would say that you're spot-on, but most people don't ever think about that. In fact, most people who are usually in the business world, the last thing they want is more regulations. But you're exactly right, any economist would tell you that there is a cost to, there may be a cost to complying with regulations, there's a cost to not complying, you just don't pay it. The consumers pay it when things go wrong. So thank you for coming to talk to us, and I can't wait to see what you do with your life, being able to hear all of the things that you've got to do at Topeka High, as a school board member is incredibly heartening. I mean, it's for a young parent whose kids will, I have a 13-year-old now, who will soon be going into high school, that makes me feel good about what we do at Topeka Public Schools. And I hope that this will be reported and everybody around the county can understand how great Topeka Public Schools, high schools are.
Madison, we did that before you opened the card.
Yes, yes.
So this young lady happened to be at Topeka High at an event, and I came up to the booth, and unlike most students who just kind of shake your hand or say hello or you got me, Anderson, she gave me her business card. And invited me to her business that she was opening, so I could, not only for taking coffee, but learn a little bit about business myself. And so you are exceptional. And for those of the folks that are here that are hearing this for the first time, that just stands out. So from the first meeting and being given your business card, to being able to see you on the video, to meeting your parents and hearing kind of your vision for the future, it is a privilege to not only know you, but to have had a part in being able to know you. Our certificate for you, and we'll be taking a picture with the entire T-Hi... Did anybody in T-Hi work at Gold's other than me? There you go. It says Topeka Public Schools, recognizing Madison for being awarded Senior of the Month. We congratulate you.
Thank you.
All right, and if you guys stay around for just a moment, we'll be taking a photo. We do have a little gift for you, we always have little gifts here. And in that gift that we've given Madison, she has a Topeka Public Schools bag to have with her, she has, homecoming is coming up, so she has a little football that says Topeka Public Schools on it, water bottle, and a bunch of other stuff that I think you'll find handy. All right, so as we move on to our next item, it is National Principals Month. It is also National Custodian's Day yesterday, and National Physical Therapist Month. Why I said it was National Principals Month, and one else emailed me, do not forget to mention these other ones. We're going to be recognizing our physical therapists at the end of this month at the Board meeting, but tonight is for our Principals. And so we'd like for all of our Principals that are here this evening to come right on down, which means walk on this way. Assistant Principals, will you please join us? All of our school leaders? And so that the people that are here who don't know who you are, we'll make sure that everybody knows what schools you're with. And then our fearless leader, Dr. Gordon, is she here with us this evening? She's going to be reading the proclamation. Oh, there she is. So we'll start off, we'll just, once Dr. Gordon just reminds you who she is, we'll just kind of go down this and pass the microphone, and then she'll read the proclamation.
I'm Jennifer Gordon, Principal at McClure Elementary.
Hi, I'm Dr. Erin Gray, Principal at Randolph Elementary.
Clayton Trader Ross Elementary.
Nick Grumert, Jardine Elementary.
Melissa Wells Martin, Lowen Hill.
Nicole Johnson, Meadows Elementary.
Ewan Pierce, Woodson Elementary.
Chelsea Artser, Woodson Elementary.
Kristy Hartman, Landon Middle School.
Stacy Schreider, Landon Middle School.
Twana Hughes, Eisenhower Middle School.
Danny Ackerman, Highland Park.
Rebecca Morrissey, proud Principal of Madison Jakes.
Rodney Johnson, associate Principal of Topeka High.
Kathy Cunney at McCarter Elementary.
Paula Riley, Principal at Robinson Middle School.
Tracy Keegan, Williams Science and Fine Arts Magnet Elementary.
Mike Heer, Principal at Jardine, and proud former Principal at Madison Jakes.
Doctora Pilar Mejia, Scott Escuela en Dos Idiomas.
Well, how can I follow that?
Lamanda Broyles, Principal at Shainer Early Learning Academy, loving on the littles.
Jennifer Malone, Principal of Highland Park Central Elementary School.
Erin McCoy, Principal at Cap City Schools.
Chori Grimes, Principal of Abinale Academy, JDC, and FlowGrip.
Sharon Midway, and I'm her assistant, so all of those three as well.
And Dr. Gordon, I believe Ms. Sharp was going to say just a few words, any other leads in the room? So Ms. Sharp is our Director of Elementary, so she'll be speaking on behalf of all of the school supervisors about our Principals, and then give it over to Dr. Gordon.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to do a little introduction for our administrators this evening. They are the doer of all things. They have to make sure that every detail is in place to ensure that our teachers, students, and families are getting the best education possible and the best service possible. And we appreciate all that they do. They give up a lot of their personal time to make sure that our schools are the best. And Principals, we truly appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. I think I got the assignment because I am the grandmother of this group and a great-grandmother, and so I joyfully accept it. I have been a Principal in this district for 17 years. I did not want to be a Principal, I did not go to school to be a Principal, and the job I wanted got a budget cut and away to a building I went, but I tell you what, I found my passion. I can't even retire because I love what I do, and I don't have an after-retirement plan. So on behalf of all of these wonderful people here, I stand before you and say, we love the job that we do. The proclamation of Topeka Public Schools, USD 501, National Principals Month, October 2019. Whereas Principals make public schools great, and whereas Principals work to open students' minds and keep ideals, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas Principals empower teachers to help shape the minds of youth, and whereas Principals continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, and whereas National Principals Month will be celebrated October 2019, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, thus proclaim, October 2019, as National Principal Month. For the purpose of taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of Principals on our lives, and be it further resolved that the copy of this proclamation will be included in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, October 3, 2019. In witness thereof, we, the Board of Education of Topeka, US 501, do hereby affix the signature of our President and the official seal of the Board of Education this third day of October 2019. Thank you, Board.
We thank you, and we'll be taking a picture with all the Principals, and I think it's already been said very well, but we know with great teams or great leaders, thank you for all that you do and that you give to all of us every day. Board members, now we know you don't have questions for every one of these people, it's a lot of them, but is there anything that you would like to say or a question that you'd like to ask before they take their seat?
I just want to say, after following Principals around, it's incredible the job that you do. I don't know how you do it all. So congratulations on this, and I know you will continue to carry on, and we really appreciate what you do for the kids in 501. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I did one big picture in my five-minute session. All right, and yesterday was National Custodian Appreciation Day. And with that, we'd like to have Mr. Seitz come on up. And as he comes up, he'll share a little bit about our Custodians, how many we have in the district. Mr. Robbins may want to make a few comments. We have two items. One, Mr. Robbins and his team has a special gift for our custodial staff, and as well as a certificate for Mr. Seitz in recognition of National Custodian Appreciation Day. The certificate, and this is one that will be going to every Custodian, it recognizes them for their committed, tireless, dedicated service and support of all students and staff. Every Custodian will have this certificate, and every Custodian will be getting a gift, which they have with a variety of goodies. Mr. Robbins, did you want to say some comments, or did you want me to, you want to share what's in the bag?
Dr. Anderson, you can go ahead and share what's in the bag. The comment that I'll make is that, you know, it's appropriate that Custodians have a day set aside to honor them and their service and the hard work that they do. That is one classification that I certainly have a deep appreciation for each and every day, and that appreciation is a result of work that I used to do years ago, and that was custodial work. It started cleaning classrooms at Emporia State as I was trying to pay my way through college. I used to work with Cardinal Building Services here in Topeka, cleaning up offices at the State Office Building, worked in a box factory, so I know how important that particular job is, and I have a deep appreciation for how hard they work. So it's only appropriate that they have a day, and it's only appropriate that we here at Topeka Public Schools recognize each one of them individually. That's why we have the certificate and the gift bag that has a few trinkets for them, some tools that they can use, and some special gloves. And we have about 96, I think it is, total, Custodians between building operators and night sweepers currently working in our district, and we want to make sure that each and every one of them get their own personal bag of goodies and their own certificates so that we can tell them thank you for everything that they do on behalf of students and staff.
We mentioned some of the goodies, Mr. Robbins and his team in operations, they were busy like elves today, so we have the gloves, we have the mini flashlight, as well as a special tool to give to each Custodian in addition to their certificate. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Seitz to share a little bit about our team. Thank you, sir, for your leadership of our Custodians there.
Okay, thank you very much. It's always my pleasure, anytime that I get a chance to talk about our custodial team, and I echo everything that Mr. Robbins said about our Custodians. While we would all agree that the Principals that we just recognized are the leaders in our building, I would also say that most of us would agree that maybe the Custodians are kind of the unsung heroes of their buildings. But yet, all the Principals, teachers, staff members rely so heavily on especially the lead Custodian, but all of the Custodians, they sometimes are role models for some of the school kids that they interact with. They have to, a lot of times, maybe do some special tasks for some of the teachers in the building and what have you, all while the expectation is that while they do all these extra things that they get pulled away from, that it's their task to keep our schools and buildings pretty much spotless or as clean as possible. And it's a tall task, and I have a great respect for each and every one of them that do what they do, and I know that everyone that is involved in the audience with any of the Custodians, either in what you do on a daily basis or for those in our district, appreciate that. And so it's nice that they're recognized, thank you for allowing me to make these few comments, and thank you very much.
All right, and as we close out and get ready to take a few photos, we do want to acknowledge one of our Principals has a birthday tomorrow, Ms. Morrissey. We also want to acknowledge tomorrow, at 1:30, we'll be having some refreshments and a plaque for our distinguished staff member, Mrs. Kruger, who will be transitioning into new opportunities, so we want to thank you for your years of service. And in addition to her plaque, anyone who wants to join us in Mr. Robbins' office at 1:30 tomorrow to celebrate her achievement as well, we want to invite you to that. With those celebrations, we're going to take a few minutes for photos, unless did I leave anything out? All right. All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll start with our Senior of the Month.
I did have a recap, I never got my M.I.A. T-shirt, but my doctor sent me a Boston jersey.
I'm there, you want to join us for the photo?
Thanks for reading.
Ms. Sharp, did you want to join us?
Yes. Dr. Gray, I just, did you come stand by Mr. Gray? Yes, try. Okay. Yeah, but. This camera. I'm going to do it. Oh, my God. Yes. Photo mom. No, I guess her. It's like. Photo, photo mom.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We also.
Dr. Gray, I just, did you come stand by Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Dr. Gray, I just, did you come stand by Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Photo mom.
No, I guess her.
I mean, Dr. Gray, lean in just a little bit more.
One, two, three.
I took like five, so.
You may remember my.
I'm sure I look the best.
I'm on the ground.
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 Reverend Williams, Reverend Williams, it's our basketball.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We also.
Why is it?
Why is it?
Dr. Williams?
This one.
It's hard to just talk to the sisters.
What is all this said to me is already taken.
The science, the science.
Yeah.
This is like.
I've been told there are no public communications.
So, we're ready for a motion to dispossess business by consent.
Mr. President, I approve the board of approval of the items of business by consent, exempting number nine personnel, and that the board approved the items of business by consent and authorized the board, president, or superintendent to sign the special projects of purchase they contract for and on behalf of the board.
Second, motion and second, any discussion?
I may, Mr. President. Just disclose, I prefer number 9.1 to be separated, just because I have my wife's attached to it, as I do every single time. Our counsel has advised me this does not represent the counsel's interest, but in the interest of trying to avoid even as far as appearance, you know, in the majority, I always think of saying, no votes.
Okay. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote on the motion.
Vote is open.
It's without 9.1. Yeah, I meant.
All votes are in, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to superintendent's report.
All right, the first item, it lists as Intact Avenue with Ms. Carr. Ms. Carr is at the social work conference, so Dr. Grimes is coming forward. Dr. Grimes is our fearless leader, our principal slash co-chair of the mental health team, slash all of student services. And so, tonight, she's standing in for Ms. Carr, and we're on the Intact Avenue website, and she'll share a little bit about Intact Avenue and/or take us to links on the side.
I mean, you can just go about Intact Avenue's. This just kind of describes what it is. There's not a whole lot to this particular site. Today, though, is the launch day, so today was the first day that we did Intact, and we did have fifteen referrals from 501. And again, it's one of those one-stop-shop where these families can come in. They're screened to know that this homeless family is ready for their next step. So, out of our six hundred and some students that we have that fit the McKinney-Vento or homeless definition, we referred fifteen today that were ready to get out of poverty and do that next step. So, there are some requirements for Intact Avenue's. The parents have to go through four different courses. They have to go through a financial course, an employment course, housing course, and what's the other one? Healthcare. So, once they finish those courses, then they're eligible for all the benefits in finding housing, getting employment, and trying to get their family out of that homeless category. The good thing, too, about it, once you've been identified as one of these Intact families, that the Intact will stay with you until your last child graduates from high school. So, they just stay with that family. Intense case management for the entire year. It is just a great program. It was modeled after KCK, had a program, reduced homelessness by fifty percent. Sustainable housing for ninety-five percent of the population that went through that program. So, a proven strategy for reducing poverty, and so we're using that same model here. This will be every Thursday unless there is a vacation day and TPS is not in session, but it'll be every Thursday, it'll be an Intact Day, and we will be referring names, and that goes through Ms. Carr as a liaison. She screens them to make sure they're the right fit for Intact. They can't handle all six hundred students, so we're taking those who are ready for that next step. So, it's very exciting, those first fifteen went in today, and anxious to see how they come out on the other side of this. What questions, what you have about Intact?
And for those that may not recall, previously, we shared Intact, because we're about twenty organizations that are together. So, when they show up on Intact Thursdays, everything from your food stamps to housing to things that you might have to wait six to sixteen weeks to get, you get that day. So, you will leave with all of those resources at one time. We also want to acknowledge that many partners have helped with this piece, but particularly advisors itself has given a substantial amount of money so that this model will reduce homelessness by fifty percent in less than three years. We anticipate that can happen in a much shorter period of time because we have more partners than KCK did when they started out. So, there's some of the partners that are listed on the website.
Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I'm trying to see, is Topeka Rescue Missions, are they part of that process, or is that a separate? They were definitely one of the instrumental groups that got this started. Okay. And simple clarity again, how does a student get access, or a student and their family get access to this process? So, first of all, the counselors, social workers in each school, they will be the ones who will fill out the referral form. Number one, they have to have been a McKinney-Vento student for this school year, and so that's the first step, and then we refer them. Ms. Carr has a whole spreadsheet, she kind of goes through how many children in the home, what's the education level, what's been done in the past, and kind of does a background on each of those families, and then puts them in a priority of who's ready to go to those classes. Commitment is pretty important, are they ready for that commitment? It's one class every week they have to go through, so those are some of the things that Ms. Carr is going to screen to be able to refer those families. And where does this, again, where does this take place? You can all come together and... The location is not disclosed intentionally, but it is right here in Topeka. And Ms. Carr, really, our role is just to refer families, they do everything else. The backbone agency is the city, so they are offering to place families that we have that are homeless across Shawnee County. Ms. Carr has served as a liaison who's just exceptional at making sure that the screening process is there. This started with the KCK folks coming to Verificker, myself, and the mayor, and from that meeting, we issued a call to action to reduce homelessness in Topeka, and from there, the rest of the pieces fell into place.
Ms. Kirk.
So, the school district will be the only place that they can access the system, or can they be accessed from one of the other cooperating agencies? The referrals will come through the school district. So, it's based on the student referrals, so students who are in McKinney-Vento definition, that's how they are being identified initially, and so that's why it's coming through the school. And so, any student in Shawnee County can go to their counselor or social worker, and if they're homeless and they qualify for homeless services, then those students can then qualify to be screened. So, if they're referred to someone that might be ready, because not everyone's ready to move out of homelessness, not everyone wants to go through the courses, but if they determine that they're ready, then they would be someone that would be eligible for the Intact Day. The backbone agency has also hired a navigator, and that person has gone through training, and that navigator really is the person that manages the caseload, meets with the families, follows their case over the course of time, and it just ends up being revolving every Thursday, we open back up for more families.
Dr. McCarthy.
What are disqualifying criteria for students and families?
So, for students to be in McKinney-Vento, it's kind of a three-prong. They can either be, so we're looking at housing, so fixed, regular, and adequate. So, fixed meaning, do they live in a tent? That's not a fixed facility, that would qualify you for McKinney-Vento. Regular meaning, I'm not couch surfing, I'm at the same resident throughout the year. And adequate is, do I have running water, electricity, those types of things.
But what would keep them from qualifying for the?
For the avenue of Intact?
Yeah.
I don't have that spreadsheet and all the things that Ms. Carr goes through. We can get that information to you, I don't have that for you tonight. I'll share with you, Dr. McCarthy, that the interview is rather extensive. So, the first piece are the qualifiers. If you're McKinney-Vento, you qualify, your social worker counselor determines that, but there's only one liaison, and the liaison for Shawnee County is Ms. Carr from Topeka. And then she spends, and the navigator. They spend time with, are you ready to go through the classes, how long have you been in homelessness, and they really get to know the families. Ms. Carr actually went to Tent City with her intern and spent time with hundreds of people in that area and met with and had conversations, and sometimes it's more than one or two conversations with the family, and then they determine that a family can go through that. But the way Ms. Carr shared it was just, if they not only express the desire, but they demonstrated some desire to move out of that space, and then they take the chance in that regard from that. So, with this Intact Day piece, it's why, right now, we have fifteen families. I guess we could have had a hundred or a hundred and fifty, but it's pretty selective in making sure that they're willing to go through all of those steps to move out of their situation, because they will leave on Thursday with a temporary residence, that's the first piece, so they will not be in homeless, you know, homelessness when they leave on Thursday, along with all of those services, which is pretty powerful. With today being the launch day, we will be remiss not to say it's launch day, we're excited, we want everyone to know that this is launching, and over the course of time, we'll be bringing another update right before the holiday in terms of what has the Intact been on Intact Thursday.
Mr. Woods, did you?
Yeah, I think you pretty much answered my question. I was going to ask, you know, what are we requiring these students, you know, for the ones who are students to do, and how we follow up with them. I was also going to ask if you could tell us just a little bit on how the caseworkers will be working to make sure they refer these folks to all of the different services that they need. I assume they are going to be in the, the backbone agency of the city is going to be the one who has a caseworker that manages, you know, the Family Service and Guidance Center, that manages the relationship with all of the other.
A lot of the mental health agencies, Vileo, Family Service and Guidance, will help provide the case managers. The navigator is a key. They're the ones who navigate by taking the family from step one all the way through the system, matching them with the right case manager. The case managers will do everything from helping them with medical care to transportation to whatever those basic needs are that they need to get met while they're going through this process. And again, that case management stays with them throughout the entire year, so it's a twelve-month case management, intense case management available today.
Any further questions? Okay, Ms. Johnson.
So, how many children do we currently have identified by McKinney-Vento? So, right now, I looked at that number this morning before I came in, it was two seventy-nine is our number right now, and we ended last year with six twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, six hundred.
Yeah, that's about the number we have at the beginning of the year generally in September, and then each year, you'll grow by a hundred to two hundred kids each year.
We can identify with caseworkers.
At holidays, bring a lot. Yeah, because one of the things is that, you know, it starts a clean slate at the beginning of the year, and everyone has to re-qualify, you know, it's not that it's a rollover piece. The way the McKinney-Vento law is applied, you do have to re-qualify at the beginning of the year. So, Ms. Carr did something which I think is wonderful when she started, when she goes to the rescue mission, and she enrolls people for school right there, ensures that they have services, connects with those families. But, so you're going to start with a zero base at the beginning, and then you'll grow that number over the course of the year. But we always end with about six hundred students every year, and over the course of my four years here, we anticipate that number will be the same this year based on just history. We'll give that update, too, in terms of how many families right before the holiday, as well as what's been the impact through this new avenue that we're all traveling. It's very exciting just to see all those people coming together with those kind of resources, but I guess the other question is, something you mentioned was that children can come and talk to their counselor. How, I mean, if they're the ones coming to talk to the counselor, how do they assist the wherewithal of their family being prepared for that process? And so, I'm just trying to figure out whether adults are connecting so that, you know, we know that we have a working system. When students enroll, there is a resident needs and residential form that every student who enrolls in 501 fills out, and then it tells us if they meet that criteria or not, and that's, you know, the parents who are filling that out, and that's the counselor, social workers who then refer to Ms. Carr for the Intact families. They know their kids.
Ms. Kirk.
Excuse me. We know that we have high school students in particular who are, have no family, they're couch surfing, or they're living, trying to live, pill or the post on their own. Are those kinds of young people going to be part, are they be part of this program?
Absolutely.
They don't have a family, they're just out there.
Because the unaccompanied youth absolutely fit under the McKinney-Vento definition, those are harder to find. They don't, they have to self-disclose some of that, and so, we'd miss a lot of those. I would say that's probably the one population that we don't have a hundred percent identification, but yes, they do qualify for Intact Avenue's as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimes. As we transition and move to enough said, we are excited about the enough said conference. We want to acknowledge the committee, the board members that are on the committee, Mrs. Kirk and Reverend Williams. As we go to the website, and we're going to show how you navigate and find this, first of all, if you want to see the pass, enough said... Okay, Ms. Johnson.
So how many children do we currently have identified by McKinney-Vento?
So right now, I looked at that number this morning before I came in. It was 279 is our number right now. And we ended last year with 625.
Oh, yeah, 600.
Yeah, that's about the number we have at the beginning of the year generally in September. And then each year, you'll grow by 100 to 200 kids each year.
We kind of identify with the councilor.
At holidays, bring a lot. Yeah, because one of the things is that, you know, it starts a clean slate at the beginning of the year, and everyone has to re-qualify. You know, it's not that it's a rollover piece. The way the McKinney-Vento law is applied, you do have to re-qualify at the beginning of the year. So Ms. Carr did something, which I think is wonderful when she started, which she goes to the rescue mission, and she enrolls people for school right there, ensures that they have services, connects with those families. But so you're going to start with a zero base at the beginning, and then you'll grow that number over the course of the year. But we always end with about 600 students every year. And over the course of my four years here, we anticipate that number will be the same this year based on just history. We'll give that update too in terms of how many families right before the holiday, as well as what's been the impact through this new avenue that we're all traveling.
It's very exciting just to see all those people coming together with those kind of resources. But I guess the other question is, something you mentioned was that children can come and talk to their counselor. How, I mean, if they're the ones coming to talk to the counselor, how do they assist the wherewithal of their family being prepared for that process? And so I'm just trying to figure out where the adults are connecting so that, you know, we know that we have a working system.
When students enroll, there is a resident needs and residential form that every student who enrolls in 501 fills out. And then it tells us if they meet that criteria or not. And that's, you know, the parents who are filling that out. And then it's the counselors, social workers who then refer to Ms. Carr for the IMPACT families. They know their kids.
Ms. Kirk.
Excuse me. We know that we have high school students in particular who are, have no family, they're couch surfing, or they're living, trying to live pill or the post on their own. Are those kinds of young people going to be part, are they be part of this program?
Absolutely.
They don't have a family. They're just out there.
Because the unaccompanied youth absolutely fit under the McKinney-Vento definition. Those are harder to find. They don't, they have to self-disclose some of that. And so we'd miss a lot of those. I would say that's probably the one population that we don't have a 100% identification. But yes, they do qualify for IMPACT families as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Grimes. As we transition and move to NUFSED, we are excited about the NUFSED conference. We want to acknowledge the committee, the board members that are on the committee, Mrs. Kirk and Reverend Williams. As we go to the website, and we're going to show how you navigate and find this. First of all, if you want to see the past NUFSED conferences, you can go to their NUFSED website, and it'll show that. But we're going to go to registration, which is a little bit down farther, and it shows registration information. And it will take you to the Topeka Public Schools website. The conference is October, it starts October the 12th, and it ends on the 15th. Mr. Travis True is going to come forward and share a few features, and then we'll talk a little bit about the conference itself. NUFSED stands for the National Federation of Urban and Suburban School Districts. And this conference overall will not only be hosted in Topeka, but several of our administrators that you just saw will be presenters. Registration is still open. And before I give any more information, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. True to share some neat pieces we have in place for those that still want to register or those that are planning to come. So on the conference website, for our keynote speakers, as they pull up the next couple of pieces that you have, Mr. True and the technology and teaching and learning team, they were just watching TV one night and decided to make a fancy app and put this app up here. And I'm just kidding about the TV piece. But he did come in and just said, hey, look what I made one night. I said, what made you think of just doing that? So he took the conference, he took the conference website, made an app. So everyone that has been enrolling has now been downloading our app and using that. So Mr. Travis True, I'll turn it on over to him.
So this is a conference website, or sorry, app. It's a web app. It's not an App Store or the Google Play Store. But you can access it through a website, or you can scan the QR code on your phone. It's also a full-function app on a laptop or tablet. So as you can see, the page looks like this on a laptop. On a phone, it looks like it normally would on a phone. On the front page, if you scroll down, it's not on the front page, we have some information. We did put some information on, and some contact on our Dream Team that participants of the conference can text or call to request whatever they need while they're at the conference. There's going to be a link to the conference program that can be downloaded to their device there. And also, there is a handout there at the bottom for the highlights of restaurants around town that participants can eat during dinnertime. We do have our sponsors listed along the bottom. And then the days are broken out into, as you can see the buttons there at the bottom. Saturday is a check-in and registration day with the reception at the Pennant. And then Sunday is the, starts the conference. And so there's the schedule for the conference. And when participants click on, click on one of the sessions, they'll see the picture of the presenter. If they scroll down, they'll see a description of the session. There'll be a check-in form that people would like to check in. That kind of helps us keep count of how many people attended. We also added a feedback forum to get feedback from the presentation. And then also, at the bottom of each page is a map, which opens up in whichever map app you use on your phone or tablet. And those, those are different on the sessions where there are school tours. So when you do the school tours, there are actually the maps to those buildings, Kansas, T-Calc, and those places that aren't at the Cyrus Hotel. So that's, that's the app. It's absolutely free to download, and we're kind of excited about having that there.
Also with that, as we go back to the conference, as we go back to the conference website, Mr. True will kind of hang around when we finish. Any other questions that you have, Mr. True, Ms. Wallace, or any members on the committee can certainly speak to these pieces. To ensure that we continue to kind of get new enrollment in NUFSED, we have Dr. Kathleen Budge and Dr. Bill Paray, the authors of the bestselling books, High Performing High Poverty Schools and Disrupting Poverty, will conclude us on Tuesday. Bill Snyder is the keynote for lunch at T-Calc on Monday. Dr. Watson, Commissioner Watson, will also be closing us out with a thank you and talking a little bit about Kansas Can. And then Trey Fols is the president of NUFSED, and he will give a greeting as we open up in the morning. And so with all of these pieces, the breakout sessions, I won't spend a great deal of time on all of those. But we are excited that our board members will be presenting. And if I didn't get an opportunity to discuss your breakout session fully, many of these are things that you've already either talked about or have had some comfort with. I'm going to just walk you briefly through each of the days. On Saturday, with the registration, the teaching and learning team, they would have just finished their professional development pieces. But Ms. Wallace and her team, as well as Ms. Bedoya and the audience, they are volunteering time to do the registration check-in on Saturday and being at the Pennant for several of the members of the team. On Sunday, as we kick off and have the various speakers and dignitaries, the breakout sessions will begin. You will have, on the conference app, this just really shows the program. So as we go down to those breakout sessions on Sunday for the audience, this gives you a snapshot of those sessions, but the full description of the session, if we keep going on right on down from there, the description follows that. So the digital citizenship, both Mr. True and Ms. Ramirez will be speaking to that right now. It says Ms. Angela Dick on that one, but actually it's updated to Mr. True. The other items that are on here, and there have been some additional updates as we continue to go straight down. Visible Learning, which is part of our work that you already know about. And that research will be done by Dr. McDonald, and a couple of principals will be joining him. On Sunday's session, the Sunday sessions, each of the schools in red on the very bottom, you'll see highlighted where each school is matched with the various sessions. So if they're talking about things they're doing, they actually will get a chance to go visit schools that also are tied to those sessions. So for example, that first session on AVID and motivating students through the arts in AVID, then it shows a little link that, you know, you will have the opportunity to go to Ross or several of the schools that are featured there, State Street. And then those principals will be involved in that session. Ms. Carr will be presenting on Removing Obstacles. And again, she'll be talking a little bit about Topeka High and the clinic, and there will be some administrators joining her. And so it mentions at the bottom, you'll get a chance to go see the T High Clinic. So we really wanted to make sure that in addition to talking about it, people know they go visit it. The final session is on Creative Partnerships and Learning in an International World. They'll talk about Signature and Magnet Schools. Scott Dole Language and the principal from Scott Dole Language will be speaking along with the State Street principal. And there's a little asterisk at the bottom that they'll be visiting Scott as well as State Street, or they have that opportunity. As we move down from there for the rest of the conference pieces, you'll see on Sunday, the conference continues with the Board of Education sessions. Those three sessions include the session that was so wonderfully attended at KASB, which is Dr. McCarthy and Ms. Coe on transgender policies. The session on Equity in Education that eliminates opportunity gaps. Dr. New will not be in town that week. She will be at the summit. However, Mrs. Johnson is paired up with myself, and actually, Dr. Gordon, who read our resolution this evening, will be joining that session as well and talking about how character plays into equity. So that's been an updated session. The final one is Mr. Robbins and Mr. Woods and Reverend Williams. And the title of that session is When Losing Isn't an Option: Best Use of District Funds and Bonds. And have conversations with other board members about that, working, what that looks like in Topeka and how bonds were used, as well as facilities. And then the tours begin. And we thought that first tour is of the Brown v. Board Museum. They also will get a chance to go see the Bishop site. And then they will conclude when they're coming back to their hotel at Williams Magnet. While at Williams Magnet, they'll get a chance to have dinner there, but they also get a chance to have another tour at Williams to just fit in another school that evening. The conference, as we go to the next session on Monday, I didn't mention the Fine Arts Highlights, which includes the Drum Line, does start us off that very first day. And then at lunch, which I'm about to touch on, is Highland Park, the choir, Mr. Contendo's choir. As we're into the Monday session, again, you'll see the schedule at a glance. So I thought it would be nice to just talk about how our mission is in everything that we do. So the tours are actually called by the names of our mission. The Engage Tour, the Prepare Tour, and the Inspire Tour. So as we go down to the sessions on Monday, the Engage Tour starts off. So we're going to go down to the description of those sessions. And so that first school tour, the Engage Tour, is really about engaging in leadership studies. And individuals will get a chance to visit the Jardine K-8 Campus as well as Topeka West. At Topeka West, they'll get a chance to see the coffee shop, the bank, and the Leadership Studies building. The Prepare Tour is really the Early Learning Center, which we're really going to focus on Shana, but we will pass by Pine Ridge. And then Ross-Eisenhower K-8 Campus is the other focus of that Prepare Tour. And the Inspire Tour is inspiring through the arts and culture by viewing partnerships and international studies. And so that's where State Street, Scott Dole Language, and Topeka High will be visited. They all will conclude at Kansas, where Mrs. Wallace has done a phenomenal job of making sure our students actually have their Kansas Day experience that day. So they'll get a chance to see that in action and see the augmented reality in action with students and staff. And then at the very bottom from that, they will have lunch at T-Calc, where they'll be greeted by ambassadors from the College Prep Academy. And the lunch is being catered in part by students who did the desserts and with Mr. Robbins's team, Ms. Yonkey and Mr. Wagner. Coach Bill Snyder, the former K-State football coach, is the keynote speaker. They'll return to the Cyrus at the end of that, and they'll have the executive board meetings at that evening. Tuesday is the final day, which again, Dr. Bill Paray and Kathleen Budge will be doing that piece. The final items that I'll mention, the Jardine, Ross, and Eisenhower tours. I've mentioned K-8 Campus, but that's pre-school through eight campus. And we will make sure we make that adjustment on the program. That kind of covers the overall experience. We added another piece. And the other piece is the book signing by Bill and Kathleen Budge and Paray. And then the new principals who didn't get a chance to hear them three years ago will be able to have a special session with them following the conference while still at the Cyrus. And lastly, we asked for vendors, many of whom are sponsors, to assist with this piece. So the sponsors will have vendor tables. But we actually asked other school districts in Shawnee County if they had things they wanted to share and beyond Shawnee County, like North Kansas City, right where the vendors are set up. We called it a resource room. So there'll be resource tables set up, and other school districts will have an opportunity to interact and share resources that they have. And if they do not show up, Ms. Wallace's team from Teaching and Learning will be there set up as well to share additional information about things people might want to learn that they just got a tidbit about at the breakout session. That covers the entire conference. I want to turn it over to committee members to add or people to ask questions if they have them.
Well, first of all, we have to say a special thank you to Dr. Anderson. She pulled in all sorts of IOUs from all over the world to try to help make this a spectacular conference. We are, you know, one of the things that we struggled with is the fact that we're in Topeka, Kansas, and you cannot fly to Topeka, Kansas, right? I mean, you have to. We're so used to it. We forget that other people aren't used to that sort of thing. So when they find out they have to then drive for 80 miles to get to Topeka, it's all interstate we can tell. I mean, it only takes an hour and 15 minutes, you know, but we can say that, but that doesn't help. And so we are really worried about attendance. I mean, I'm sharing with you. We really were worried about attendance. And we need to, because this is a small group to start with. So when you get people starting to be worrying about having to go all the way to Topeka, we really had to do something pretty spectacular. And I think that the Tuesday morning program, this is the first time that the conference since I've been going to has had a really top-notch, exciting presenters. And when she was able to bring those folks in, and those are, we were trying to get other people from the districts to come on in and to feel like they could participate in this. And we really are hopeful that they do take advantage of the folks being here. But I just want to say thank you to Dr. Anderson, because we, you know, we forget that she knows people all over, right? I don't know, she doesn't go outside the United States, but I'm sure it's all around across the United States. And so to be able to exercise that kind of contact that she has, I think is really helpful. And so I'm hoping, I don't know what the latest registration numbers are, but we were at 50, which is, we were thinking, if we got to 50, we're going to jump up and down and say, yeah, we made it. So I don't know where we are now. Do we know where we are now?
70.
70. Okay. I mean, this is wonderful, wonderful. And I think that Dr., that's Reverend Williams, everybody else is a doctor. Reverend Williams and I sat down, when we started putting this together, one of the things we wanted to do was to make sure that people had a chance to experience Topeka. And downtown Topeka has just started, it's grown and it's exciting downtown. Now, the barbecue place just closed, and I was bummed out to see barbecue now for that, as in, they just closed. But we have, what, we have three brand-new restaurants downtown, besides the Globes under new management. I mean, so there's some really interesting places, all within two blocks of the Cyrus Hotel, which is a phenomenal hotel. I mean, I felt just we could experience that in Topeka. So we're really excited that we can showcase the downtown area. We can showcase that we're a little bit more sophisticated than you think we are, and that we have the Brown versus Board of Education tour that we're going to take people on to take them up and see that, which we think is important to be. So I'm rambling on, but I'm just, I'm excited, because I was really worried about how this was going to really come out. And I don't know, John was worried. We've said the other night, the day, we were both worried. And I'm not worried anymore. John?
He was confident.
Now, you said...
He was confident.
He says, we weren't worried.
Well, and I have to say, Mr. Codage did the booklet and all of the graphics and the website. And then Mr. True came in with the app. Ms. Wallace's team helped with the sessions. And it has been a tremendous team effort that has just been extraordinary, including the sponsors over the last week that agreed to contribute to make sure that we, all of this is balanced out. So we're excited. We're just excited to showcase our staff and students and what we're doing. So it's going to be a really nice time. And we anticipate some added enrollment will be coming in as well over the course of the next few days. So that final number on Monday, we'll be sure to email you that.
Thank you. I'm just, it's just that we made the 50. That was sort of like our benchmark in my brain, to make 50. Now we're at 70, so everything on that is really, really great.
Yeah, that's a thought. You don't want us to... We counted you in.
You're in the program.
No.
Me too.
Oh, the other thing is, I think that it behooves the board, by the way, to, Saturday night, when people are coming in, they're going to be over at the Pennant, and we have the second floor of the Pennant Reserve for us, to be there. You don't have to be there the whole time, but to go and to greet people that are there. That's the Saturday night, because they have, they're going to have to. Except the people who are coming from Nebraska, they can drive down. But everybody else is going to have to have been flying in the night before. They told me for Sunday, because they're just not going to be able to get a flight that's going to get them to Topeka in time for a morning session. So they'll be coming in at night various times. So the Nebraska and Missouri people, they'll be driving in, but the rest of them will be fine. I mean, you can't fly to come from Utah, places like that, right? So North Platte, Nebraska, you're going to have to fly probably several different airplanes to get to Topeka, Kansas, so.
So you're going to organize bowling teams to go there?
No, that's downstairs. This is upstairs. I'm kind of thinking they'll do that. I mean, this is a pretty free-flowing group, so, but I just think it's important for us to be there, just to, you know, say welcome. We're so glad you're here, kind of thing.
Well, the other boards and... Well, the other boards in Shawnee County, of course, are not members of this organization. So how, I mean, I'm going to meet with all the presidents on Wednesday this week, and I'm happy to invite them.
They will have to pay to come, but it's not that expensive.
Can they just come to a lecture?
Well, that was one of the things we're talking about. What did we decide?
Well, and I think-
They're on Tuesday or something.
Yeah, I think, and especially if they're not coming for lunch and they want to come, because some may want to come with their book and just hear. That doesn't cost us anything. And so if there are sessions that they're coming to and they're not staying for the conference and they're not partaking in any of those other festivities, then we've said that that's fine to do. We also know that some have asked, can they just come to lunch? You hear Coach Phil Snyder, and so we've allowed that. And some of the other boards have signed up, actually. So that's been a nice, some other of the board presidents, I assume you either said something to them or, so some of them have signed up. I do want to mention that Mrs. Wallace and her team have created bags. And the communications team had ordered and identified some items to put in the rooms. And so, Ms. Wallace, do you want to share what's going to be on the bag?
Absolutely. So they'll each receive a gift bag in their room when they check in. There are some logoed items, a small little notebook with our logo on the front with a pin. It's always nice to have something to take notes on when you're at a conference. A water bottle with our logo, as well as a magnetic clip. And then to bring in some of downtown, there will be a Hazel Hill and Cinnamon Popcorn tree in the bag as well.
So the hotel is leaving that on each of the beds of the guests as they check in. And the Dream Team piece, you know, I love the Dream Team concept that we kicked off. It'll say, we want your stay to be great. If there's something that you would like to give us feedback, something that you need, if it's raining, you need an umbrella, anything that you need to make your stay more comfortable, click on the Dream Team app. And there is a Dream Teamer that is staying at, close by the hotel, that will make sure that their dream is met within the hour. It says something like that, depending on the dream. But basically, making sure that any need they have will be met in that regard. Any other questions that you have for us?
Just a side piece too. We, we're doing it differently than they have at previous conferences we've gone to, because we don't have a lot of really, the options to eat in Topeka on a Sunday is kind of not as extensive. And so that's why we're serving, we're providing the meal on Sunday night. We're doing that at Williams. On Monday, they can all hit the restaurants downtown. They're all the eye open and lots of things to do there. But that's what, usually the reverse in our other trips that we've taken. But we just, that was my hope, that we would do something for people on Sunday and then, Sunday night, and then to, then-
Monday night, they're on.
They're on their own and they're going to have some fun on their own. And we're not, we're not advertising Want to Make a Quarter. We're advertising downtown, so. Because it's local, everything's locally owned down there. They're locally owned restaurants. They can get those same chains out there in Utah, for God's sake, so. Come on down.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, we're ready for board comments. Reverend Williams? Dr. Mickelson?
Just want to publicly thank Misty for contributions for the last three years for all you've done for district and our students.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Woods?
So I know we are probably going to be conferenced out, because this looks like a heck of a conference. I'm really excited about it. But we're coming close to that time where it is time for our board members to start registering and notifying our clerk if they're going to attend the KESB conference in December. I'd strongly encourage everybody to do that. I think it's a, even the folks who are on their way out, I know it's a witch's dog. But it's, okay, all right. Very important thing to attend, definitely. Back to the NUCET conference. I really can't say enough how impressed I am with the speakers that we've got, the way, the format, the way it's laid out, the way it tells our stories to be public schools, the way the program's set up. I think this is just masterfully done. I'm excited about it. Looking forward to it. And I certainly echo what Dr. Mickelson said. Thank you very much for all your contributions over the years. And looking forward to my last few months here. I'll probably be sad.
You're going to have time to be sad. I would also say thank you, Misty. You had a hard job, and I appreciate it. The other thing is, I wanted to bring up the letter to the editor. It's just gotten confusing. I did send the letter to the editor. Apparently, it went to somebody outside of the newspaper. But I wanted to make sure that, I had wanted to send it to all the council members, because we had talked about, you know, contacting our council, our individual council members, and realizing we don't cover all the city council seats on this board. So that it seemed to me that a heads-up courtesy copy of that letter should go to them before it goes into the paper. It's scheduled to go into the paper sometime until the 7th and the 13th. I don't remember if that's up to the discretion of the newspaper. But I would like to-
No, he'll do it right. He'll do a good job for us, too. We hope you know that.
That's beyond my control.
Apparently, it's beyond my control, too. But I do think that we do, we owe, I mean, I think it's a courtesy thing to send it to our city council people. So if I have your permission, I will send the exact letter. Are we still having staff there at the meeting on the 15th to talk about it? Okay, so are we, are most of us make that meeting on the 15th? It's on your calendar? Okay. That's a Tuesday. I don't know when, do we know what time this comes on?
Second floor of the city council chamber is 6:00.
Yeah, 6:00.
Do we know what time they're planning to do this, this time? They don't have that kind of agenda?
We don't know yet.
We won't know, okay. Well, since we get that handle, that'd help me out a lot. Okay, well, I will take care, I will do that. If not tonight, tomorrow morning, making sure the letter goes to every city council person with the heading, information to them, we're doing this as a courtesy and wanting them to know ahead of time and that we will be there on October 15th to provide some testimony to them at the time. And we'll say we, the district. I'm sorry, I can't, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Oh, added to the Google Calendar as well, so you can actually see on there.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That it?
Oh, and I think I did say though, if, I think I said email to you or somebody else that I said if the chamber wanted to come and present to the boards, that was fine. I didn't want to do the individual stuff.
Went to you as well, right? Oh, okay.
No, I don't, I, no.
Okay. Rather than us meeting outside with the chamber, we would like them to come and talk to us, if they choose. Mr. Robbins?
Mr. President, one thing we may keep in mind is that for them to come and present to the board, it would be after the public hearing. There wouldn't be any opportunity for the board members to entertain any sort of discussion with representatives from the chamber at a public hearing. I would encourage that maybe reconsider having the meeting with the chamber representatives. They just requested time so that they can better understand the position of the board and so they can have an opportunity to understand what they're trying to accomplish.
So before the meeting, the city council meeting?
Yes.
Well, my contention is, they've known about this for how many months? And until they found out there was this letter, I don't think they were interested in talking to us or they were concerned about talking to us. I think our letter says, our letter says we're not opposed to anything. We're just letting them know what our position is. They had their opportunity. They didn't talk to us about the TIF at 29th and Fairlot, which affects us. There was no communication. And this was not going to have a communication either until we made the decision to throw that out. So I'm not really too concerned about they're not having the ability to come and talk to us at this point. It may sound like I'm being a poor sport, but I don't think they should be talking to us individually. That's a board decision. So that's me. The rest of the board can make their own choices, obviously.
So if Mr. Sneed, I understand that he had tried to reach out or did reach out to the attorney earlier, but she doesn't recall it. So I know most of those people I'm very happy to meet beforehand myself. And I invite Nancy, Ms. Kirk, if you would like, to meet with them. I don't think it hurts to meet with them.
You know, I do know that they are under the impression that we were aware and that, you know, it wasn't at the 11th hour that the board became aware of the desire to create a TIF with the, you know, previously identified boundaries. And I think that that is why, since, you know, they were under the impression that we were aware of the fact, and now they're hearing that there are some strong concerns that are coming from the board. They just want an opportunity to have the discussion.
Well, I will just say, have you, have they reached out back to you about dates? I gave you three dates.
And I refer to Mr. Robbins, those dates, and then I guess it was Kirk's answer and that she did not invite her folks forward, that she might not talk about it tonight, for nothing.
That be further? Okay.
You know, there's always the possibility if the board wanted to consider to have a special board meeting prior to the public hearing. If the desire is to have the chamber speak to the entire board.
And if I may, this is Mr. Robbins. And I both believe that just in keeping in with good relationship with all public officials, that listening to their thoughts and when they thought they might have reached out. And even if there's not a response, but that conversation is one that has been encouraged in setting that up with some or any members that might want to have that meeting was what administration feels might be a good opportunity.
So what does the board, I mean, it looks like to me there were two alternatives. One, we do call a special meeting and have them come and present or at least communicate with us. Two, I'll meet with, I think Curtis Sneed and somebody else. I can't remember who.
Vince Frye, possibly.
Vince Frye. I know them both. I'm happy to meet with them. And Nancy Kirk could come. One other person could come. I mean, three of us could meet with them.
Wouldn't let me do it.
Well, it hasn't been set up.
I mean, I certainly would like to. I think it's a, I think it's still a valid thing for us to, for us to be involved in. I think it's important. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask, you know, some kind of special discussion every time they want to do this. So I'd certainly like to be there, too, but it'll be a schedule. And if I can, I have 100% full faith in all my colleagues and friends.
So maybe Ms. Lister could publicize the date and communicate it when it happens. And then we could have at least one more person if they're able to go and just say, or if Mr. finds them, and two more people can do it. So I think that makes sense. And like, Mr. Woods, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sure you've heard more of some groups as well.
So we can get on that tomorrow. Let's see, what's the date of the? It's the 15th, I think. 15, okay. So it would need to be before then, and I don't know the dates. I can't remember the dates I gave you, so.
I wanted one of the very next days, so that was the second.
So it has to be this week sometime. That's correct. Or next week's?
Right, next week's.
Okay, well, reach out tomorrow and see whether a lunch or just a coffee, Jeeley's Coffee Shop or something like that in order. And we'll work around it.
Do we know the economic impact if this were to pass through district?
There really is no economic impact. The way the TIF district works is that basically the assessed property values would freeze at where they are now. And then as property values increase, as investment came along, the property taxes would still stay at that baseline. So whatever taxes that we are collecting as a district now from that area, we would continue to collect. We just wouldn't be able to take advantage of any increase in assessed valuation as the years went by.
So there is economic impact, and you factor in inflation, you're losing.
Yes, but it's impossible to, yeah, to calculate what that impact would be.
I mean, for those reasons, I'd be okay with it for 20 years if they didn't come back 20 more years. If we do another one, it includes the exact same.
I think what bothers me is that people forget, we don't have, we don't have, when you ask people, they, like, I can't tell you how many people think Westwood Mall is in, isn't in Topeka Public Schools. Westwood Mall is beyond our district. Wooddears beyond our district. On the Freedom Way and the, and the other big south, they're not in our district. So when they think of the Topeka Public Schools, they're not looking, we can't look at what the whole city boundary is. We can only look at our little piece, which I don't think other people have been really looking at. I mean, even the library has the whole county. They can get, they get their property tax from the whole county, and we don't. So, I mean, it's just something I think that they've not ever really paid much attention to. And I think what's happened is all of a sudden, people are paying attention to us, maybe. But I think they need to. And I, you know, and I don't think there's anything in our comments that we just, we are opposed to it. We don't take a stand one way or the other. We ask them to consider the impact on 13,000 students for the next 20 years, the generation of students.
It's very reasonable. So we'll get on that. Is everybody okay with that plan? Yeah. Okay, the only other, let's see, it's my turn. And I don't have anything to say except for remember that a board meeting next time is at Bishop on the 17th. And it's a ribbon cutting at 4:00. So. Very good. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
My computer's on, yes.